Let's call this meeting of the Kokomo Common Council of Order. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a public hearing on a appropriation that will handle first, and then we will revert back to our regular meeting cadence with our regular meeting. This time, would the clerk please call roll?
Councilman Wyatt.
Here.
Councilman Cameron.
Here.
Councilwoman Young.
Here.
Councilman Hayworth.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilman Weichart.
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders.
Here.
Councilman Micklic.
Here.
Thank you. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6884 by title only?
Additional appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $1,528,250.
Is there anyone on the council or in the audience that would like to speak to this ordinance and this appropriation? Is there anyone in the audience or on the council that would like to speak to this appropriation? Hearing none, this meeting of the public hearing on ordinance 6884 is adjourned. Now we'll go into our regular meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand for invocation, or you may remain seated as you wish, Councilwoman Sanders.
I'd just like to invite Pastor Jeff Russell from New Beginnings Christian Fellowship Church. He's also the chaplain for the police department. We appreciate you, Pastor Russell.
Yes, and I'm also a part of the Howard County Ministerial Association. I am in charge of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I was the last two years anyway. In this past year, well, just earlier this month, I was honored to be able to lead the meeting, and I just wanted to know an idea that I came up with, and that was that every single table had a minister in our community at it, and then we prayed for every department in our city. At each table had an individual department, plus, on top of that, every city councilman was prayed for individually at different tables. Some of you, because there's, I think, nine of you, there were 22 tables, so some of you actually got prayed for three times at three different tables, and...
(laughing).
What I'm just trying to say to you is this, is that we've tried to take it to another level, that it's personal, it's corporate, and our city gathered for that, and I would just like to invite you that if indeed that I'm able to lead it again next year, we will be doing the same thing, and I'd certainly love for you to come and participate in that. And with that in mind, also, I'd like to just say a scripture, read a scripture, and just say a prayer. Therefore I exhort, first of all, that supplications, prayers, and intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, and for this statement, for all who are in authority, that we may live and lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and reverence. Let's pray. Lord, it's my privilege to come before you and to pray, Lord, for these folks right here, these fine men and women of our city council. And I pray, Lord, that they would serve honorably. I pray, Lord, that they would serve with love for you, for their fellow man. I pray, Lord, for their personal integrity and their corporate integrity, that, Lord, they would serve the citizens of this community, Lord, in a way that, Lord, truly blesses our city and makes our city a blessing. And I pray tonight, as they do their business, that, Lord, it will go well, and that, Lord, they will be able to make the proper decisions. And I just want to also pray for the appropriation that was just made, Lord, that you would bless that as well. And as I close this prayer, Lord, I want to close thanking you, Lord, for our first responders in this city, the fire department, the police department, as, Lord, we just had four policemen, Lord, with over 100 years' experience collectively between them all, just leave our department, and that, Lord, you would bless those men who served honorably, and then, Lord, for those officers that serve and protect our city, that you'll be able to watch over all them and their families as well. I pray it in Christ's name. Amen. Thank you.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Would the clerk please call roll?
Councilman Wyatt.
Here.
Councilman Cameron.
Here.
Councilwoman Young.
Here.
Councilman Hayworth.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilman Weichart.
Here.
Councilwoman Sanders.
Here.
Councilman Micklic.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of January the 22nd.
22nd.
Motion has been made and supported. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this motion from the council or anyone in the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we come to communications. Our next council meeting will be February the 12th, 2018, with an informational meeting at 5:30 PM in the Lauks Room. Pub Lauks Room is the room right behind you. Public hearing at 6 o'clock in the council chambers, and council meeting will follow. We will set a public hearing for ordinance 6880 and ordinance 6881 for the February 12th meeting, 2018, at 6 o'clock. I'd like to acknowledge that each of you council members have received in your packet the airport's 2017 Rotary Fuel Fund Activity Report from the Kokomo Municipal Airport Aviation Commission. I need to mention that our last, at our last council meeting, we had an appointment on the agenda to the Howard County Emergency Management Advisory Council. That appointment comes from the mayor's office and not the city council, and so that person will be serving as an appointee of the mayor. Council members, I want to remind you, on ordinance, should ordinance 6882 pass and ordinance 6884 pass, you need to stay and sign, okay? Under penalty of Brenda tackling you at the front door. Okay. All right. We also have any communications from the council at this time? Is there any general communications from anyone in the audience? This would be communication other than what is on our agenda. If so, please come forward and give your name and address. Okay. All right, let's start. Is there any committee reports that anybody would like to bring forward? None. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6880 by title only?
An ordinance vacating right of way located in the city of Kokomo, Indiana. First reading.
Councilman Cameron.
I move for passage ordinance 6880 on first reading.
What? Thank you, Councilman Cameron.
This ordinance deals with kind of shoring up an area that's been vacated for, well, the first 728 feet has been. It runs along where Philip Street comes with Park Avenue almost to a T. There was once a kind of a road that went through there, 1964. The largest portion was vacated, and what this ordinance deals with is the last 533 feet that ties into Markland, and Cartwright Ellis is on the west side of it, and Seneca Sales is there right next to it, and therefore I feel that this ordinance should be passed based on its no use to this anybody, city, or anything.
Thank you, councilman. Motion has been made to pass ordinance 6880 on first reading. It's been supported. Is there any further discussion from anyone on the council or in the audience in regards to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6881 by title only?
An ordinance vacating right of way located in the city of Kokomo, Indiana. First reading.
Councilman Cameron.
I move that ordinance 6881 be passed on first reading.
Councilman Cameron.
What this deals with is where Pettit Park is, and if you remember several years ago that we'd received a number of letters from some of the at-risk students there about the graffiti, that was, the building that's standing there now is going to be demolished, was something of a concern, not only to the teachers and administrators, but a lot of real bad graffiti. And at that time, the owner would do nothing, so the city came out and painted it and charged him. So that building there, the old croon dairy type, little front ice cream, is going to take it over by the school and be demolished, and there is an alley that ran between McCann and Walvash Avenue, and that's going to be no longer an alley anymore, and the schools take that, and the area that they're taking over is going to be moving the playground equipment down and give them a lot more access so the kids have playground, and also, I think, improve the parking facilities, particularly during elections, which is, that's not the reason they're doing it, but it's secondary for us. So I feel this is a good ordinance to be acted on and voted in favor of.
Thank you, councilman. Motion has been made to pass ordinance 6881 on first reading and supported. Is there any further comments from anyone on the council or anyone in the audience in regards to this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And let's keep going. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6882 by title only?
An ordinance fixing the maximum salaries of appointed officers, deputies, assistants, department heads, uniformed police and fire, and employees of the city of Kokomo, Indiana for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2018. Beed ordained by the common council of the city of Kokomo, Indiana as follows, as amended second reading.
Councilman Weichart.
Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance 6882 on second reading.
Support.
Councilman Weichart.
This is a $200 increase in longevity pay for police. It's the only monetary increase police are receiving within their three-year contract. We're doing this because the salary ordinance was signed before the contract was agreed upon, so I would ask that the council pass this on second reading.
Okay. Thank you. Motion has been made to support ordinance 6882. Is there any further questions from anyone on the council or in the audience in regards to this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to go out of order, and I'm going to go and save the Autumn Woods ordinance for last, and I will go back to Councilman Weichart. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6884 by title only?
Additional appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $1,528,250. Second reading.
Councilman Weichart.
Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance 6884 on second reading.
Support.
Councilman Weichart.
This is additional appropriation toward bond payments, and those bond payments are actually in the amount of $947,000 for municipal sports stadium, $366,250 for the Riverfront District apartments, $215,000 for the YMCA. It wasn't budgeted in August because this is when the 2018 budget was set, so I would ask that council approve this appropriation.
Thank you. Motion has been made to pass ordinance 6884 on second reading. Is there further comments from anyone on the council or anyone in the audience?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is this tip allocation money in the general fund?
No.
Is not any tip.
Okay, thank you. General fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor of passing ordinance 6884 on second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're coming to the Autumn Woods. Would the clerk please read ordinance 6883 by title only?
Rezoning P.R. to R3, location 1275 West, 300 South. Petitioner Jeff Thomas for Autumn Woods, second reading.
Councilwoman Young.
Mr. President, I move for change in rezoned ordinance 6883 on second reading.
What? Councilwoman Young.
The petitioner of Jeff Thomas for Oakmount Development, he's requesting a change in zone classification from parks and recreation to medium-density residential for property at 1275 West, 300 South, for the planned use of a major subdivision, Autumn Woods, single family, and the request zoning change is comparable with the surrounding zone in the area. And as I said before, the residents had questions about it, and they was concerned about the water, price of the homes, and the traffic safety, so...
Thank you. Okay, at this time, is it, first off, is there any questions or comments right now from any council member? Sure you may have some later, okay? Wanted to give you opportunity first. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll take public comment in regards to this ordinance. For those that weren't here last week, you need to come forward, give your name and address. I ask you to be brief and to the point. When we start hearing the same argument over and over and over, I'm sure one of the councilmen will call for question on the motion and we'll vote on it, okay? So we want to try to move this in an efficient manner, at the same time allowing those that wish to speak an opportunity, okay?
My name's Stephanie Cowan. Address is 1622 Fox Haven Drive. I'm pretty much speaking for all my neighbors and everybody that are by me. Our goal is, or your guys' goal, the zoning board is supposed to protect us. There's three neighborhoods right now in this area. This needs to be low-density. Medium-density is going to cause overcrowding, and there's going to be two lots right there in my backyard. So that's my biggest concern, I'm going to have two houses in my backyard. It's concerning because Mr. Thomas didn't have a price for the housing when we first asked during the first meeting, and then 10 minutes later, he came up and he had a price for $250. And then the second meeting, he came up and he set a price of $250 to $350. That's a pretty big jump. So I think he's kind of telling you guys what you want to hear. So we're kind of, my neighborhood, we feel like you guys aren't listening to us, and you're kind of listening more to him when he's an out-of-town investor that doesn't even own the property yet. So we just kind of feel like you're not listening to us and hearing our concerns. And I guess one last thing, we don't understand why he called it Autumn Woods, because he's taken out 12 acres of the woods. So why would you call it Autumn Woods for? That's all I have to say.
That's the legal description on the ordinance, ma'am. It says Autumn Woods, the title of the ordinance.
Right, but I mean, you're taking out 12 acres of woods.
But that's, you're playing word games, and I'm not here to do that.
Right.
I have to go by what the title is on the ordinance, okay?
But aren't you guys supposed to protect the existing property that's already there, the neighborhoods, when we have three neighborhoods there right now?
Right now, we're supposed to vote on a change in zoning. That's what our responsibility is.
And we understand, like, there's going to be houses back there. We're just asking not for medium-density to overcrowd that area. So we know there's going to be houses back there, but we're just asking for low-density. Thank you.
Other comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Brian Hubbard, 3047 Crooked Stick Drive. I have a question, and so I don't know exactly how to ask the question exactly, like, do I address you, or who do I get to ask? So I'm going to throw it out there, and we can figure out who gets to...
Just throw it out there, and I'll see if I can handle it.
Fantastic. So one of the questions I have is, if the, is it possible to make the zoning change contingent on the other parts of the process? And I can't really speak to what the process is, because quite honestly, I don't understand it. So I guess what I'm saying is, my understanding is there's a zoning change that then the next, there's another step in terms of what the development is, there might be a step related to a plot. I don't know what that process is, but is it possible to say, let's not change this, let's let the other parts go through? If they go through, great, the zoning happens. But if it doesn't go through, everything reverts back so that the area continues to be zoned as parks and rec. Is that something that's possible?
I'm not going to answer that, because you have posed something that has never been asked of this council.
Okay.
So we have Mr. Sheeline here, giving me that look, but come on up, Greg. I think the zoning has to, the process starts with the zoning change.
Okay.
Now, he'll tell me if I'm wrong.
Yes, Greg, Sheeline, Director of Kokomo Howard County Plan Commission. There are no contingencies in zoning. The zoning has to be put in place first before anything else can move forward. So, and I'm sure that most developers would not want to move forward without the zoning in place, so there are no contingencies in zoning.
But there is possibilities, as it goes into the next phase, that it could be rejected at that next phase.
Possibly.
Is that correct?
If they don't get everything done.
So there's nothing cast in stone. They have to go through each level of approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Before you sit down, can you explain the process? Like, in terms of the governmental side of the process? Because all I know is I got a certified letter that said something's going to happen, but I don't understand what are the steps?
You received the certified letter for the rezoning, which is obviously step number one. And then you can talk to Wyatt here and Mr. Thomas. There are several things that need to happen after this step. They're actually in the zoning ordinance, it's online. You can look that up and print that out, or I can get it to you either way, but they have to follow exactly what the zoning ordinance says.
The zoning ordinance actually has all the way from...
Yes.
...start all the way through...
Correct.
...they're now selling homes.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Sheeline, would it be fair to say that the starting point for the residents was the Plan Commission meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
You guys either vote it up or vote it down, if it's...
And keep in mind, all we're looking at tonight is the zoning.
That is correct.
That's all we're looking at tonight, and there's two things that the Plan Commission, my office, and the Plan Commission Board looks at in rezonings. Number one, is it, does it fit into the zoning ordinance, and does it fit into the comprehensive plan? And it does resoundingly, on both of those items, it does fit into the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. So at this point in time, that's all that we look at.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions?
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hubbard, you done?
I am. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Please come forward, give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Heather Weber. My address is 3036 Crooked Stick. Last week, I think I had mentioned to you that my concern was that the rezoning was being considered without any changes as far as city structure, roads, pathways, safety measures, that there isn't anything put in place. I was given the name of the deputy mayor to contact, I've contacted him multiple times with no return phone call. So I'm just very concerned with a family that uses that road. It's a very busy road. There is no shoulder, it's all recessing, it's flooding, and I'm just hoping that with this tax revenue that's planned, you know, that should be, along with the zoning with these new houses, there should be the tax revenue to make these changes, but yet I know that all I keep hearing is, well, it's priorities. It's just priorities. Priorities is income for the city, but yet how are we doing those improvements so that these large family neighborhoods have access to city parks and safety?
And you say you've tried to get a hold of Mr. Tharp?
Yes, I did, three times this week, and not heard it back.
I can get a hold of him.
But that doesn't answer my question.
I understand, but I'll get a hold of him. Just a second.
I just need to interject that Mr. Tharp's grandmother passed away this last week, so he's been out of the office.
Okay.
Well...
Mr. President.
Still...
I have, I've taken it upon myself to talk to the city engineer. I've gotten a similar answer, it's priorities, and I've encouraged him strongly to make this a priority from the administration, that we can have a multi-use path, and the deputy mayor and I talked about it at our last meeting Monday night briefly, that runs from Timber Valley, I think, along Center Road to the stop sign. And there is a 40-foot easement there, but there is some difficulties in doing that. So I have talked to the city engineer. There is no commitment from him, nor the mayor, nor the administration, but they know that it is something that is needed because Center Road and the drainage and everything that goes with that will have to be looked at. So to your point, I am very supportive of a multi-use path that gets us into Jackson Memorial Park. When and how we do it, I have no idea yet, and nobody here could give you a commitment, I don't think, tonight, to do it or not do it, other than to raise the level of awareness. So that's all I can add to the conversation.
So what you're saying is that they don't plan any type of changes prior to doing this type of rezoning? There's nothing considered on the city's part?
There's no commitment to do this at this time. Now, they're fully aware of it, that Councilman Micklic has said something to him. I plan on getting a hold of David when he comes back and have some conversations with him myself. There may be others on this diocese that'll do the same thing, but we cannot give you a commitment tonight, because that's not in our jurisdiction, okay? We appropriate...
I'm not asking for a commitment. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, but I'm not asking for a commitment. I'm just asking, how does that planning go about, and is that not something that is addressed? I've been told this for years, that, well, the city engineer uses that road, so what difference does it make? He's okay to ride his bike down there. That's one thing, but what about my four children who ride their bike?
That's not an acceptable answer.
I don't think so either.
So I don't think anybody on this council would dare say something like that.
I have heard that.
Okay.
Your concern, Mr. President, if I could?
Sure.
Regardless of the zoning or rezoning?
Right.
You've got, there's an issue on Center Road.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So it's a different set of circumstances. It's not attached to the addition itself. Your concern is it needs to be fixed regardless of whether there's a housing addition there or not.
I agree, but my concern is that there is already so much flooding and so much recession that if we add all these extra in our houses...
I understand.
I realize the rezoning...
But Center Road has been flooding there for years.
I understand the rezoning is inevitable. I truly understand that, but my concern is the safety. There are so many pedestrians that are hit, bikers that are hit, and it's just, what happens? Wait till a child is hit? Because they don't have access to the park? There's no way for my children to ride their bike to the park, and we do it all the time. Ask anybody who's driven down that road. Our family uses that road, and there are many other families who use that road. So my concern is, yes, it might not be attached to this, but I think it has to be a consideration before rezoning is approved. Because as a council, if you're not looking at those factors for our city, and how can we make improvements to better our citizens' lives and safety, isn't that what you're here to do, is to also look at those when we make changes to the city, is how can we make it safer, and how can we make our citizens, you know, have a better way of living? But to me, again, it's more safety than it is anything else. And that road floods, and as a healthcare professional, my concern is, I also know it's very difficult to get emergency vehicles and things through if there is flooding. So what happens at that point if this isn't an issue that's being addressed? I feel like I'm just being put on the backboard by being told, call this person, call this person, and it, to me, it just seems like it's just a way to ask me to sit down, and that's what's very upsetting.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, since Councilman Micklic has spearheaded this, and is also our appointee to the Traffic Commission, is there any merit at all of bringing this forward to the Traffic Commission?
I see a lot of merit, bringing it forward, okay?
And it will. And that's one of the reasons I talked with Kerry Straner, who is also on the Traffic Commission, and Kerry uses that road. Kerry and I have had a very detailed conversation about that. Traffic, speed limits, and traffic, we can handle. However, there's two things that I look at here. One, the planning for the development's not done, which changes the drainage considerably, which will change the dynamics of the roadbed and the multi-use path, if that's what it is, or sidewalk, or whatever it gets to be, but that's got to come from the engineer's office. But to have a zoning change can't be contingent on engineering for a roadbed, or it can't be contingent on a multi-use path other than what is in front of that development itself. So I shared with you tonight at the meeting, you know, that I'm very supportive of doing exactly what you say, and then we have the other issue of getting into the park. have the other issue of getting into the park, but that's a separate issue. Every home along Center Road has a 40-foot easement and egress that we can use once the drainage has been addressed, of which it wasn't when the county owned it, okay? Now that the city has it, we have to go back and fix that. All right? So that's another kettle of fish, so to speak. So I am encouraging Kerry and Randy, you know, I'm glad Randy's here because I want this to be a priority. And I want Kerry to make it a priority from an engineering point of view, particularly working with Mr. Johnson and the developer, to see how we can marry this together to make one path into Jackson Memorial. That's the best I can give you at this time.
And I would think the developer has a stick in this fight. He doesn't want to sell homes that have to go through flooded streets.
I would hope so, but it's not in planning at this point, so that's what's concerning to me.
Well, the park is a big draw, and the park is excellent. And that's a big draw, and my goal is to get the people to the parks safely.
So Councilman Micklic represents us on the Traffic Commission, all right? And it's going to take more than just the Traffic Commission to pull this off, but...
We won't let it die.
We will. I'm giving it to him as an action item to take this forward to the Traffic Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Which you can attend...
I will absolutely attend.
And give the same...
I worked with Terry Townsend for years because I host a 5K in along that area, so yes, sir, my respect.
Sure, not a problem.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Raoul Azubia. I live in 3167 Crooked Stick Drive. It's been addressed many times about, talking about flooding on the front side, on 300. My concern is my backyard. The city have a pipe, a 20-inch pipe on my backyard to drain the water from the street, drain water. Well, that goes directly to that lot, and that lot absorbs part of the water. The other water ends on 300. Changing rezoning, I worry about my property getting flooded. That's a 20-inch pipe. It can pass, according to 20,000 gallons of water per minute, if it's fully addressed and everything. Seeing what happened in the last year, we had four big floods, or big rain last year, if I remember. And I've been noticing that the water, instead of going into the drain, is going, pouring out. So that means that thing is flooded. It's run out, or it's have more water than it can handle. Well, that water also goes to that lot. So I've been hearing from this gentleman, they're going to address their water issues in their property, but this is not only their property. We're talking about, this is a pipe that goes, is from the city, and again, I don't want to have my property and my neighbor's property flooded because of this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else on the council?
You got someone.
Beg pardon?
Oh.
My name's Sean Connor. I live at 3103 Crooked Stick Drive. I have like two quick things. If you go, if you guys do R3 in that new subdivision, it's like $1,100 minimum square footage. We are considered low-density where we live. Ours is $1,700 a square foot. So basically, you guys are, the city's not getting as much money. Everybody that lives where we live pay beaucoup, a lot of money in taxes where we live. And so my thing is, if they live there in the same area and they get the same views as we do and stuff, I think they should have to pay the same taxes we do to live in that area. So if you guys make them R3, is there, what is the thing to make our neighborhood?
Taxes are generated on your assessed valuation based on the calculations that the levy's placed on. So it doesn't matter how...
If it's zoned, it's different, isn't it?
No, it's based on the value of your property, your house.
But it's not based on your zoning?
No.
Okay. I didn't want to, I thought it was, so...
Unless you're, you know, like, business zone is a different calculation than residential and so forth, but it's assessed valuation. So if your properties go up or down, your taxes go up or down. And there's a 1% cap on residential property in the state of Indiana. So you can't be assessed any more than the 1% because the state legislature passed that.
So I guess what I'm saying is, so if we got, if our neighborhood got rezoned, it wouldn't change our taxes at all then? I mean, it wouldn't change?
If your neighborhood got, what would your neighborhood get?
I'm just saying, if, no, well, because we're R1. Right now, you want to make everything compatible, R3 and R1. The problem is, where we live, you have to have a large, medium to large-sized house where we live. If you go to R3 like you guys want to, it's a small to medium-sized area.
It's still assessed valuation is how your property taxes are gauged.
Right.
So a lot of, you know, even if, even if the city never raised the tax rate, if your value of your property goes up, then your taxes go up based on that 1%. If you're at the 1% level, it's going to go up and down. So their property's going to be assessed a certain amount of money, and it's going to, that assessment's going to be applied to them just like it would be to you or to me. You know, whether I lived in your neighborhood or not, whether I live in the city, or you went in town, or, you know, I live on Washington Street, I've still got, I've got the same tax rate you've got.
All right. Well, I mean...
The school may, the school rate may be a little bit different. You know, there are, it's not just city taxes.
There are tax amenities.
You've got city, county. When you live in a city, you pay county taxes as well. You pay a school tax, you pay library tax, and you pay a, there may be a township tax.
Yes.
So it's all added together, and those will vary a little bit, but in the same neighborhood, the tax rate's going to be the same.
Okay. Well, one other thing is, is the lot size. If you guys met us in the middle, went to R2 and said R3, the lots are bigger on the R2 than R3.
Now, that might be a difference.
I mean, is there any way that...
There is a rate on your, on the improvement on the lot and a rate on the lot. So if you have a bigger lot than somebody else, you might pay more because your lot's bigger.
Tax...
You know, that's, well, I'm just telling you, that's what it is.
This is what I'm just saying right here, is I'm talking about the square footage, minimum square footage.
You're talking about the property, though. Or are you talking about lot square footage?
Lot square footage. It's like 11...
Well, then it might be a little different.
Well, it's, this one, if it's R3, it's $1,100. And if it's, where you live, ours is $1,700 minimum square footage for a lot thing. So what I'm seeing is, we're living...
Can you help me with that? I don't know.
I have, I, I'm trying to comprehend the whole dialogue here, and I'm missing it. I don't get it.
Well, I'm missing something.
What we're trying to do is, you guys want to go R3. We're trying, all we're trying to do is get our lots the same size.
First question I have is...
Rezoning. This is all rezoning.
Sir, I want you to state and address the entire council because they're all going to vote on it, not just them.
Right.
Okay.
But that's what you guys, that's what we're doing is the rezoning. But the rezoning matters if you put 72 houses in. If you're rezoning one, how many houses is he going to be able to build in there? But if you build less houses, they can be bigger lots because people want bigger lots. That's the reason they live in our neighborhoods, because they want bigger lots.
Greg, how is Crooked Stick's, R2, R3?
R2, R2 and R1.
Yes.
R2 and R1. And then it's Foxhaven and Crooked Stick. And that's all we're wanting, is the same size.
If you, if you, if you buy a lot, you're going to pay a certain tax rate on an empty lot. It doesn't, it's going to be based on how big the lot is. Okay? Once you build on that lot, then the improve, that's called improvements. If you look, you can look your property up on Beacon. It's called Beacon, and it'll tell you exactly what the improvements on the lot are in the lot. It only stands to reason that if you've got a larger lot, your taxes might be higher, but it's not going to be based on the house. It's going to be based, the only reason the difference is going to be is on your lot size. You know, if I live in the city and I have two lots, then my house happens to sit in the middle of the two lots. I don't, but the house next door to me has two lots. The lot portion of that property is going to be more than what mine is. But my house is going to be taxed based on the same rate as that house. That's what I'm trying to explain. Depending on the area that you live in and the other factors that are involved with library and county and which school system you're in and all that.
I mean, that's one of the reasons why we moved out there, because we have bigger backyards, we have bigger houses, bigger lots.
Well, you'll pay more taxes then.
Right. And I do, and that's the reason I, I mean, if you're willing to live out there, then that's what you have to pay to live out there. All, that's all we're asking is to go, and everybody says R3, can you at least consider R2 or R1?
Well, the...
Because he's still going to make his money. And if he goes 50 lots, you still make, you know what I mean? The bigger the lot, the bigger the...
Our responsibility is either to vote this ordinance up or down.
Right.
I can't change it.
Now, he may change lot sizes later.
You may change it later, but...
I'm not asking. I'm just saying, they were saying R3. Can you say?
And so basically, R2 and R1's not even in the question on your vote then, basically?
No.
No.
R3 is what's...
R3 is what we're voting on tonight. Okay?
So there's no way to go to R2?
Not at this meeting, not, not on this ordinance.
Okay.
We're either going to vote it up, or we're going to vote against it. Okay?
So if you'd vote against this, and if we have another meeting, then he could try to get R2 then? I mean, what's the thing of what's going back? There's no going back then, I guess is what I'm saying.
This is the second reading.
Right.
Second and final reading.
Right.
Okay? So if we vote it down, it doesn't happen. If the majority of the council votes for it, it's done deal. This is the second and final reading.
Right.
Okay?
I mean, that's, nobody has a problem with the neighborhood going in. They just want it to be compatible, same-sized lots, bigger homes like we have. That's all, that's all everybody's asking. So...
I understand. Okay. Thank you, Sean. Any other questions? Anybody? Okay. Motion has been made to pass ordinance, somebody else? I'll let you come up. Okay. Motion has been made to pass ordinance 6883 on second reading and supported. Without any further questions from anyone in the audience or on the council, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, being there's no further business to come in for the council tonight, this meeting is adjourned.